Okay.
Okay.
What's up?
Well, it's my understanding that we submitted, uh, four weeks ago, we submitted invoice for our annual, Sheriff's Office rodeo. It's my understanding it's not being paid and has been denied. And so with that said, uh, first I'd like to find out why, um, why something we've done for four years is no longer appropriate. See what, what angle you guys are coming from, uh, what legal opinions or, uh, the law or what, what it is your, your side is that, that educate me of.
According to the auditors, and you've heard this over and over, the auditors have stated that those funds cannot be used for these type of operations.
Yeah.
According to what they're finding in the statutes and what I need to get with them to verify, is that what your attorneys at the auditor's office is saying?
Okay.
I know what our attorney has said, you can't be paying it.
Okay.
Now, the question I have is why is the county paying for it when you have an organization that you have been helping put on, or they have been putting on? That is a 501(c)(3) now.
Okay.
And why they are not funding it? Because it's something for them to utilize for their show of abilities. Is that not correct?
Well, it, it's a community policing program, um, that puts our deputies in, uh, the community, builds relationships with the community, um, strengthens our bonds with the community. Uh, we started it in 2020 during COVID when the government come out and said, hey, uh, you know, you gotta stay away from each other and have outdoor activities. We kept getting bulletins saying, hey, you know, the government shut us down, uh, so they've given us options to, uh, do outdoor activities. So that's when the rodeo started was 2020. And based off that, people outside to bring the community, we had everybody watch their loved ones die in funeral or rest homes, couldn't even have access to them. You know, we separated all of our family. Um, and so we wanted to do our part, rebuild some relationships and obviously nobody was, can understate the, the fractured relationship between government and, and our citizens, uh, more so than what COVID did to us all. So, uh, we set on, uh, are about to rebuild that relationship and give the community something back, um, and build those relationships. So, um, so I, and I'll get to your question. I wrote it down of why the office is paying for it, not the sheriff's posse. Um, and I'll get to that in a minute, but I, I wanted to kinda, you vaguely said that your attorney said and the auditors have said that it's against the statute and it's against the constitution. Did they share that with you? What exactly?
That's what I was gonna look in here and see what they gave the statute and what they did.
They gave us the constitution. Trent's got a copy of it. I would allow you.
So Trent, what you give me was, uh, Article six, section 23 through 25 of the Missouri constitution, correct? So Jim, while you're looking at that.
Yeah, I'm doing it.
So in our world, there's three things that we look at when we look at, see if something is legal, um, in the law enforcement world. We, we look at the constitution, we look at the state statutes, and then there's a third leg that we have to look at, and that's what the court has ruled to interpret it, uh, either the constitution or the laws for situations just like this where you have two parties that are conflicting with what their opinion is or how they interpret something. And so in this case, uh, the courts have, uh, rendered many, um, court cases, uh, and they use what we call the public use doctrine. And so, um, if you want, Jim, I can wait until you find the statute. There's not a statute.
Jim, I don't think it'll be in that because the sheriff's audit hasn't been released.
It hasn't been released. That's what I was saying right here in the very first edit. Information would be found.
So let me explain what the public purpose doctrine is, and I'm just gonna read it straight from what the government puts out. And that's what, what that's talking about. This is the standards that they use to determine whether expenditure by government violates the constitution, Article six, section 23. The public purpose doctrine mandates that government spending of tax dollars must serve a public purpose, not primarily benefiting private interest. This means that while private entities might actually benefit, the primary aim of the expenditure must be to advance the well-being of the community or the general public. Um, here core principles that they look at expenditures must demonstrate benefit to the community as a whole rather than just specific individuals or private entities. Uh, the expenditure should be connected to a legitimate government function or purpose, um, not primarily for the benefit, uh, private benefit. While private entities may experience benefits, the primary objective of the spending should not be enriched as a private interest. Um, and it, it goes through and talks about how we are able to support healthcare with public money. Uh, it specifically breaks nonpublic safety, investing in police, fire departments, emergency services to ensure the safety of the community. Uh, it allows, that doctrine allows the county government to support economic development because it benefits everybody. Um, and it goes on to separate the difference between indirect and direct benefit. Um, a key factor is whether the benefit to the private entity is directed intended or indirect and incidental to the purpose. So with that said, I don't, I don't believe the community policing program that the sheriff's office has is directly benefiting any one entity over another. Um, so I had sought out, you guys have, um, I, I know you consulted your attorney. I don't know if he's giving you anything variety to share with me. I, like I said, I.
I have to look back through the emails and I can't find it.
The first part of this is for me to educate myself on, you know, if I, let me just say this, if I'm wrong, that might take, um, please educate me so I can correct that. Um, if I'm not wrong, um, then accept that on your guys' behalf.
Well, if you're not wrong and we find that you are correct, we will apologize to you.
Well, so.
I want you to know that.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, but I, I guess my question is, what does it take for the county commission, um, and, and Jamie the clerk to? What is it, what is it gonna take to show you that I'm not wrong? Yes. Because in, in July 26th of 2023, you guys received a letter from Kepke Phillips LLC Law Firm, um, that breaks down in detail the public use doctrine. April 23, you guys received a letter from, uh, Daniel House, Attorney at Law, um, basically mirroring that lawyer's, uh, deal. Both of them quote, um, cases that the, uh, Supreme Court of Missouri had used when they consider public use doctrines. Um, I have another legal opinion, uh, or, or research and, and I'd like to share that with you guys. Um, this opinion addresses the legality of law enforcement spending tax dollars to fund community policing events such as a rodeo in the state of Missouri. The analysts will focus on compliance with Article, Article six, sections 23 through 25 specifically of the Missouri constitution, which govern the use of public funds by local governments and will apply the standards established relevant to Missouri Supreme Court and Court of Appeals ruling. That's that third leg that I was talking about. We have the constitution, we have statutes, and we have court rulings. Constitutional framework of Article six basically says that the constitution generally prohibits any county, city, or other political subdivisions from owning stock in, lending credit to, or granting public money or property, quote, to, to or in aid of any corporation, association, or individual, except as otherwise provided in the constitution. Article six, section 25, because there's no 24, it was revealed, reiterates that the prohibition stating no county, city, or other local or other political corporation or subdivision of the state shall be authorized to lend its credit or grant public money or property to any private individuals, association, corporation, except as provided in Article six, 23. This section explicitly aims to prevent the diversion of public funds for private benefit. I agree. That's what the art, that's what the constitution says. You can't take public money and just give it away. Get it unless there is a public benefit. Crucially, both sections is interpreted by Missouri courts, not Chad, Missouri courts, permit such expenditures when they serve a legitimate public purpose. The central inquiry therefore is whether the expenditure for the community policing event like a rodeo serves a primary public purpose rather than an incidental private benefit. So let me talk about judicial interpretation of the public purpose. Missouri courts have constantly held that the determination of what constitutes a public purpose is primary legislative function to which courts afford considerable deference. A legislative or government body's determination of a public purpose will not be overturned unless it is found to be arbitrary, unreasonable, or a mere subterfuge for a private purpose. Goes on to state, here's the cases that this standard has been applied to. Kirkwood versus Sunset Hills of 1979, Churchin versus Missouri Industrial Development Board of 1987, Premier, Premium Standard Farms Incorporated versus Lincoln Township of Putnam County, 1997, Fust and Attorney General Missouri, uh, 1997, Noonar versus City of St. Louis, 2017, City of St. Louis versus the State of Missouri, 2024. In summary, the courts broadly define public purpose and grant significant deference to legislative or government bodies and make them that determination. The critical element in that the primary and ultimate objective of the expenditure must be for the public benefit, even if private entities are involved in execution or incidental benefit. Now I want to apply this, these court findings to the rodeo. The expenditure of tax dollars by a law enforcement agency for community policing events across the board and such as a rodeo can be strongly supported as serving a legitimate and primary public purpose consistent with the Missouri constitution and the established case law. And the established case law. Community policing is a philosophy and organizational strategy that emphasizes proactive problem solving and police community partnerships to address crime, social disorder, and fear of crime. Events like the rodeo, when properly structured as community policing initiatives, contribute to the core government function when it relates to public safety. How is the community policing rodeo aligned with public purpose? Well, fostering community, uh, relations and trust. The primary goal of community policing is to build positive relationships between law enforcement officers and the citizens they serve. Events that bring police and community together in a relaxed, non-enforcement setting help to humanize officers, break down barriers, and foster mutual understanding and trust. We've all heard that with the riots and everything that has gone on. This trust is invaluable for effective law enforcement as it encourages citizens to cooperate with police, report suspicious activities, and provide critical information leading to more successful crime prevention and resolution. Crime, improved police and community relationships directly contribute to crime reduction. When citizens trust their police forces, they are more likely to participate in neighborhood watch programs, share information. That will be an important thing to think about in a minute, about criminal activity, feel safer in their communities. A rodeo can incorporate educational components in the public safety, crime prevention, drug awareness, and all the other stuff that we have on the tables out there. Such events allow the agency to demonstrate its commitment to community engagement and well-being beyond traditional enforcement roles. This can enhance the public agency's image, recruit new officers, and build goodwill, all of which indirectly but significantly support the agency's ability to fill its public safety mandate. Community events can stimulate civic economic engagement and a sense of shared responsibility for the community's safety. We're the sixth largest county in the state of Missouri. I just want to point that out. I don't want to tell you how many cops I have on at one time because I think that's a, a, a security risk for the criminals that will see this later and say, boy, let's, let's capitalize on that. But, uh, by involving residents and activities with law enforcement, the agency encourages active partnerships and maintaining order and addressing local concerns. I listed off several cases that, that utilized the courts found in support of a public use doctrine. But let's talk about legislative deference, which is what Noonar and Fust cases, uh, referred to. The decision by a law enforcement agency, government entity, to fund a community policing rodeo for a purpose outlined above constitutes a legislative and administrative determination of public purpose. Courts would likely defer to this determination unless it's shown to be arbitrary or unreasonable. Thank anybody who thinks it's unreasonable. Hey, I'm gonna give you the benefit. Given the widely recognized benefits of community policing such as determination, such, a determination is neither arbitrary nor unreasonable. Uh, the public object, which is found in Churchin, while a rodeo might involve private vendors, um, or even private individuals or associations participating, the ultimate object and purpose of the expenditure is not to enrich those private entities. Rather, it is to achieve public benefits of improved police, police, community relationships, enhance public safety, and effective crime prevention. Any private benefit in, is incidental to the primary public purpose, which is permissible under the Church, Kirkin case. We'll talk about general welfare, the promotion of police community trust and cooperation leading to safer communities clearly falls with the general welfare standards articulated by the courts. I think we can all agree when your law enforcement has a good relationship with the community, the community supports it, they, they report crimes more often. Um, and, and when, when law enforcement struggle and as many are and, and are understaffed, you see citizens doing neighborhood watches and, and picking up the slack. But let's talk about the direct relationships to law enforcement function. The recent case of City of St. Louis versus the state's decision directly supports expenditures related to law enforcement operations and the well-being of officers, which implicitly includes fostering and supporting a community environment. Serve as a, they, this serves as a public purpose. Community policing events are an integral part to modern law enforcement operations. We have to give our law enforcement officers an opportunity to do good, to be seen with people, and to build those relationships, not just to be at their house to take somebody to jail, not just to hold the hand of a dead person, not to deliver those death messages. Do we have more functions than, than just the typical role? Um, in conclusion, basically, uh, thorough review of Article six, sections 23 through 25 of the Missouri constitution is consistent interpretation of public purpose by Missouri appellate courts. It is, it, it, it is the opinion that the expenditure of tax dollars by a law enforcement agency for community policing events such as a rodeo is constitutionally permissible. Such expenditures, when properly framed and executed, is a means to foster complete community relations, enhance public safety, promote crime prevention, and build trust. So that is a legal opinion. Now, I threw a lot of stuff out there. In April 9th of 2025, this very commission signed Resolution 25 dash U zero one. Okay? And in that section two, I was very specific when we had that meeting about the Blue Shield program. And I said, do not sign that. Do not make a pledge to me, to the community, and to the governor of Missouri if you do not intend to hold up your end of the deal. And so here in section two, the very second thing says the Bates County Commission supports community policing initiatives and partnerships to aim, aim to build stronger trusting relationships between law enforcement and the community. These efforts include creating local collaborations to help prevent crime, enhance public safety, and improve the quality of life for all residents. Law enforcement recruitment and retention is section three. So when we do these things, one of the, one of the ways we recruit, um, is by having that good relationship. We're plucking people out of the community and sometimes as far away from as South Carolina or North, which Carolina? South Carolina. Uh, Larry was from Georgia, um, and, and they, they see the publications, they see far and wide what happens even in Codeup Bates County. And, uh, they liked what they saw. They came here, they've been here for a couple of years. Um, and so I, I think that's a testament to some of the things that we do that other agencies don't. Um, in this, you guys agreed that, that you acknowledge the challenges of recruitment retaining law enforcement. Um, you committed to supporting programs that provide incentives, professional development, and retention strategies. Uh, but I honestly feel that one of the things that I battle is what feels like to me is a constant attack by this commission, um, to control the office of the sheriff. I'll give you a, a chance in a minute to address that. But I, as I continue to do my research, um, I found it funny that the, the Department of Justice, uh, just came out with, uh, community policing development micro grant. Um, and, and what I find in here is strikingly applies to here. Um, there's a grant to uplift the image of law enforcement profession. And the Department of Justice recognized that more vital role fostering safe and thriving communities is having a positive role in law enforcement. And in this here, it says, under this subtopic area that qualifies for funding, uh, COPS office seeks law enforcement agencies to develop or implement innovative and collaborative projects aimed at uplifting law enforcement as a profession and promote the importance and nobility of those who take the role, uh, roles. Goes on further to say that such projects could focus on publicizing stories of positive law enforcement engagements in their community, which I have yet to see in the last 12 years from the commission towards my employees. Um, it also targets applicants whose values are in harmony with the agency's missions and values. It establishes pipeline programs such as cadet and explore programs, volunteer groups encourage young people to consider law enforcement careers, uh, simultaneously promote police officers and positive role models demonstrating the human side of policing, breaking down negative stereotypes and fostering goodwill. Applicants should identify a list of activities and strategies and explain why they believe this approach is successful. A variety of objectives can be proposed to achieve the projects and may involve agency personnel resources as well as community partners. So our rodeo is a community partnership with the posse, with the Agnes Club, with FFA, with the City of Adrian. Um, and, uh, several other groups have, have now become, 4H has become involved in, in some of the stuff we're leading. Um, and I know the comment has been made, nobody else does that. Well, nobody else drank the milk of a cow until somebody did. Somebody had to be the first guy. So I, I would ask you guys that in, in December and January, did you, did you guys know we were gonna have a rodeo, that I was gonna submit an invoice for a rodeo? I mean, we have for four years.
We probably figured you probably would.
You figured you would. And so at that time, you guys approved my budget, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You didn't call me in and have a public meeting and ask if, if that was the case and voice your concern back in January at the budget time. So if you knew that I was gonna do this and you approved the budget, you in essence approved funding for the rodeo. Okay? Um, the, the courts have been very clear that once a budget is approved, uh, that the sheriff is, is the, the decider. You do, you not have a line item veto capability. Um, and when you approve my bills, and, and again, we've been, we've been fighting over invoices and stuff since 23. Um, there's a three-pronged approach that I, I believe most commissioners understand and respect. And that is, is it, is there a budget that would allow the expenditure? Is there money in the bank? So we're not writing bad checks. I, and I agree. Um, is there an operational use or is it gonna benefit the public if we're gonna spend public tax dollars? Is that, am I fair that those are the three important things that you guys review and ask yourselves? Okay. And so in this case, it's budgeted. Does the sheriff's office have money in the bank? We're not writing a bad check if we write the check. And then is there an operation use or a public benefit? Now, I think that's where we all come to a disagreement. Am I correct? Is there a public benefit to this?
Through the sheriff's office, yes.
Okay. So it, it benefits the sheriff's office. So.
I, I think it benefits more than the sheriff's office.
I was.
I mean, I, I, I don't wanna just skip over that. I, this is a, to me would be a huge community event. And I, now, and, and go on. I, I just don't, I mean, I can talk later. I mean, I, I just don't wanna, yeah, that's it.
Can I speak to that?
And skip over it. I just.
You know, cause it's, I'm, I'm not an elected official. I'm, I'm an appointed official. Um, and, and I can say that this event has become our community's second largest event. Um, it's, it's estimated that when the rodeo goes on, the population of our city doubles. It has become that, that large of an event. So much so that this year, the city, um, we've, we've invested, um, hard dollars. We've invested, um, over $30,000 in improving our rodeo arena. Uh, we've improved lighting, we've improved, um, the, the quality of the rodeo arena itself. Um, and that doesn't count staff time. I mean, if you look at All In With Labor, I mean, we're, we're probably approaching, you know, close to $45,000. Um, so that we can put on a, the quality event. Um, because I see how the community embraces the event. And I see how the little kids walk up to not only my law enforcement that's present, um, but the sheriff's deputies that are present. You know, they, they go up and they start talking about horses and they start to have that interaction. And, you know, usually when the community interacts with law enforcement, it's not a good day. Um, and so when you see them being able to interact in a positive environment, that's what we're here for. Um, you know, that's, that's what government i- is their purpose. You know? When, when you see people walk up and, and start to have conversations and, you know, it's, it's horses, it's, you know, they, they see a bull ride and, and they're able to, to, to have a, a conversation about something that's, that it's not a bad day. Um, you know, when, when Justin got thrown from his bull last year, I mean, there were a lot of conversations about that, you know? And it was people having those conversations and, um, you know, it got people talking to one another. And when the community talks to one another, that is a good thing. And this, this provides an opportunity for the community to come together. I mean, we can talk about the tax dollars that were generated by it because when this event came on, there were a lot of people that, that weren't just from my community that came to town that spent their money that, you know, Bates County benefits from. Because, you know, they, they went to our restaurants and spent money. They, they fueled up at our gas stations and, you know, so we, we could talk about the, the financial benefit to the county. Um, but just the opportunities that, that went on. And then people started to see our park. And then they're like, hey, you know, Adrian is a quality community. And then they started coming down for other functions and, and then it exposes Bates County as a whole. And so, you know, there's the community policing aspect, but then there's a whole nother community aspect that, you know, that these guys don't even, you know, talk about that, that we should be talking about as other community leaders that exposes Bates in a much larger context. And so one avenue leads to another one. And so I think any opportunity that we have as leaders to expose Bates County, it's an appropriate use of funds, in my opinion. I also reached out to our attorney and said, can the city have a rodeo? Is it legal? They researched and they said, there's absolutely no challenge to the city having a rodeo. I reached out to other, um, city administrators in other cities and said, hey, if we were to have a rodeo, is there any challenge to the state constitution? Is there any challenge to statute? They said, absolutely not. Uh, if this were to ever be litigated, you are on solid legal foundation in which to defend a lawsuit. There is no challenge whatsoever. Um, I cut a check to the vendor that is providing the bounce houses for the Bates County Fair. I said, am I in any legal jeopardy for using taxpayer dollars to fund this situation? They said, absolutely not. It's for public use. So, you know, Adrian funded the ability for Bates County children to be able to go to the county fair and have free entertainment. That is a, an appropriate use of taxpayer dollars. There is no legal challenge to that whatsoever. I would always offer a word of caution, just based on my experience. Auditors are there to provide issue. So they are always going to err on the extreme side of caution. Always. They are accountants by training. Um, they also tend not to look at the, um, the legal side and the case law side of, of statute. Which is why anytime that auditors typically find things, um, and again, for those that don't know me, I, I was an elected official for 10 years before I moved to the other side. Um, so my experience is on both, is on both sides.
Can we be clear? What is your job?
Uh, I, I was the county auditor for Cass County. And so.
The other side. I like that.
And, and so, so the interesting thing about, about my role in Cass County, um, I was the, the auditor, but my chief deputy was an attorney. So anytime that we offered an opinion, we not only offered an auditor's opinion, but we offered a legal opinion together. So it was not challenged because we offered both sides of it. Um, and so, but again, auditors, they offer the financial side. And so when they do that, then it always goes over to the attorney general for prosecution because they, they don't look at it from that perspective. And so anytime that you get an auditor's opinion, you always have to take it with a grain of salt. I, I'd always point to Arthur Andersen. You know, they were a high-quality, um, auditing firm. They were the ones that were. They were the ones that were advising Enron. Telling them that what they were doing was okay. And we all knew now where Enron is and what happened to them. And as a result, Arthur Andersen is no longer in business because their opinion was absolutely wrong. And so again, not saying that auditors are wrong, you just have to be very careful when they audit their opinion.
Just so, so you guys have, and I I sk- I I laid these two lawyer. These lawyers were paid by me. And we all know that sometimes lawyers will tell you what you wanna hear, but that's what they get paid to 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 do right. So I I like to think that I'm a down-to-earth person and so. I reached out to the county attorney, the third-class county, he says prosecute an attorney, can be the county attorney. And Hugh said, because by statute, I represent both the commission and and all all office holders. I'm gonna defer this to a different attorney so that I'm not the one that has to take sides or whatever, and I respect that. And I said, I honestly, truly want an attorney, a great third-party, his attorney doesn't know me, don't even know who his attorney is. And so I I got I I got the response back from that and it also said that. That the short answer is the commission approved your budget, which included the rodeo project. Having done so, the commission does not have a line item veto to decide not to pay your invoices for the cost of the rodeo project. Budget laws govern Bates County, Missouri, and the Missouri Constitution court decisions are clear that because the rodeo was included in the budget's approval. You're free to spend the money as long as the expenditure, there's the caveat, as long as the expenditure can be deemed as supporting the public good as part of the community policing project. Is there anybody sitting at this table that would disagree that this is a community policing project? And so I I truly want to hear that honest answer.
I think it's wonderful what you guys do for community, you know, for PR work, you know, just. When the auditors tell us something and a lawyer tells us something, you know, what's right and wrong. If you can show and get this here, we can read or something, I mean, that's. Just so we're not wrong, Chad, because auditors scare the, you know, I don't know about. You understand what I'm saying, most auditors like, boy, you're in trouble for this if it's.
No, I agree. Sometimes thank the auditor's word is God, you know, I get it. Nobody wants, and and let me just say, this this is all in good faith, I I'm not saying strictly auditors and their opinion, I'm just saying, I think the auditors. And and I, let me be clear, I've not seen anything in writing from the auditors. Does anybody at this table have that in writing?
Not yet.
Not yet. So this is magical, the auditor said, but we don't have any in writing. Okay.
Now, one thing I want you to understand, I have nothing against the rodeo. My issue is the way it's being funded, out of money that you receive from the US Marshal Service. To service the detainees that they have or that you have. Help take care of your corrections officers and your staff. That's where I'm in there at, because I, you see what I'm saying? If you could use some of your other funding that you have control of, that would be fine. But when you use the funds that's being set for the function. That the US Marshal Service is paying you to do, that's why I got the problem, Chad. Do you understand what I'm saying? Have nothing against.
Can I respond to that real quick, though?
Yeah, go ahead.
So a hundred percent of our budget comes from the detainees. I don't get any local tax money, correct?
Right, but you have other funds that you have that we don't have any control over, would never have control over. Because they're funds that you get outside of.
But but we agree that those funds that was received support my staff and the function of the sheriff's office as a whole, am I correct? You agree with that? Community policing is a function of the sheriff's office as a whole.
That was the question you just asked, if any of us agreed or disagreed. That was your question.
So I I respect it, Jim, I really do, and I I I'm. And they're coming here and cutting the 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 stigma with a knife. These people all here wanna go to work and do what they do, they don't wanna play politics, and that's all this is, let's be honest, that's all this has been for a couple of years. And and we, I supported you two in front of a bunch of people that wanted your heads on a table. And said, this is inappropriate, okay? And and that's not a big deal, but let me let me ask you this, let me put this to you. Speaking of, and I I'm not. So the federal government gives us three point two million dollar government funds, right? And everybody take a deep breath, I'm not gonna attack anybody. So the commission has sold discretion on how that was distributed, correct? Am I correct? If I'm wrong, I'm 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 learning still. Okay, and you gave that money away within certain guidelines, right? Do you know why you were able to give federal tax dollars away to entities like the food pantry? Or public water districts, fire departments that weren't part of our county government?
Because it came under the guidelines that we would have.
But but the federal government can't give you permission to violate statute or constitution. They give it to you and said, here's the parameters, but you still have to look at the constitution of the state of Missouri. And the constitution says you can't give money, so once that money comes into the coffers, it is county money, we agree. It was it was yours, it was it was belonged to the citizens, I I as Jamie said the other day, right? If it wasn't for the public use doctrine, you violated the constitution. Article six, section twenty-three through twenty-five, because you gave that money away. But you were able to do that, and I support that. You were able to do that because the courts have already ruled that there is an exception to the constitution. Groundbreaking, right? I'm just saying, just the reason why you were able to give it away, because that's what you did, I'm not giving any money away. I'm paying a rodeo company for their service to help us with a community policing project. Now, I'm not asking if you guys like it, I get there's different opinions on that, it it doesn't, it doesn't matter. I know the constitution and the statute say, sheriff, you are the director, you were voted in to run the sheriff's office. And and to run that as you see fit, as long as it's within the guidelines. In good faith, I truly believe that we have left off, and maybe your attorney. And maybe the auditors have have did not consider the public use doctrine. And I I'll throw another thing out.
They could have, we don't know.
Did you guys give Children's Mercy cost money?
We give them a grant every year.
You give them a grant?
Yes.
Okay, but you're giving money away, you can call it grant, you can just call it an invoice, you can call it anything, you give it away, right? Same way with the children's center, and again, I don't begrudge any of those guys for that. But you can't sit here and say, sheriff, we're gonna hold you to this standard and then give money away. And and if you do, then that definitely has the appearance that this is a a personal. Or it is subjective to at least being discriminatory. That's all I'm saying, and so I came here today, and I presented these lawyer opinions to you before in twenty twenty-three. You guys have copies of those somewhere. They they also refer to court cases that were supplied. So I, you know, what it's gonna come down to, in my opinion, and I don't wanna spend a tax dollar's money to do it. I think it's a waste, I don't know about your attorneys, okay? But my attorney has asked me to avoid a civil suit by Al McSanders. Go plead your case, make that your last effort. If you're using the attorney that you used to use, he likes you to get sued. What I'm saying is, that's where he makes most of his money, what I'm saying is, my attorneys are saying, let's not go there. Let's let's settle it before that, because nobody wins and 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 he's right, it's wasted tax dollars. You wanna talk about ten thousand dollars, we're gonna eat that up fairly quick, and I can tell you, I probably already have eaten that up with my attorney in the last year. So I I I guess ultimately you guys can vote on it, I think the vote should be public. I think that. I don't I don't think this is really, do I?
Just wanna make a clarification that, because I don't see the budget, and a lot of people don't see the budget. When you submitted your budget last year, you had a line item for the rodeo, it said, it didn't say rodeo.
I don't have a line item for uniform pants, I don't have a line item for light bars.
Clearly on the budget that that's how much you spend on a rodeo.
So don't, no, there's no line item, but you heard it themselves say, yes, we expected you to host a rodeo. And we approved that budget, right, so.
Can I ask the question, Ryan, of you when you were the auditor at Cass County?
Yes.
I know Cass County has a rodeo.
Yes.
How did they pay for it?
You know, it happened after my tenure.
Cause I know, John, you've been calling other sheriffs in other counties and and you were told, I believe, their auxiliary paid for it. And John asked, well, how does the auxiliary get their money, and they got it from donations. So I'm just asking, if that's how it worked when you were there, or if you weren't there, then it was after you, okay.
I I can confirm that's exactly how it's paid.
Okay.
And and let me let me address that.
And I will too.
Let's compare us to Cass County, we're a county of seventeen thousand people. Cass County has a hundred thousand people, the fastest growing county in the state of Missouri. They have a lot of professional businesses, lawyers, and all those people are looking for tax deductions. And they they give generously, a hundred percent. I I'm gonna tell you where I I stand on going to the public and saying, one, one, our rodeo is free too, also, Cass County doesn't do that, charge at the gate. So if we're gonna care apples, apples, I probably need to to show that, but. Everybody in this community just got a letter from the assessor. That said your taxes are going up anywhere between eight and. Twelve percent, multiple years in a row. And so, if we're taking the adage of, well, we can just go out and get donations and pay for it. I would love to do that, but I also know that I'm a government entity that is gonna go to a community where sixty, seventy percent of this community. Qualifies for free or reduced lunch. And I'm gonna say, I know you're already taxed to help me, and you could potentially lose your house and and if if you are breathing air. You should know that there's an uproar about our taxes anyway, but you want me to go to these businesses? And ask for money from them, additional money to pay for this rodeo, above and beyond. When the county has nine million dollars in the bank.
Do you sell advertising for the rodeo?
So the posse does, yes.
And the posse gets that money?
Yep.
And do you have a donation bucket that you get donations? And then the optimist gives you money for the.
They do.
So all that money goes into the posse account?
Goes to the posse. And can I address that a lot?
Sure.
Okay, so the posse is one of our community partnerships. They do some of the late work and as part of of their contribution of of labor manning the. The gates is, we allow them to sell sponsorships. Receive those sponsorships and put those banners up as a way to fund the posse. We know in in the last few years, the hot topic is that the sheriff's office came to do stuff for the posse. The auditors don't like it, am I correct on that? Have you seen an invoice from for posse stuff at all lately? Since the auditors have voiced their opinion, absolutely not, because I voluntarily willingly said, okay, if if there's a rift there. We'll stop doing that and they can do that themselves. So the optimist club gives us a donation from the cells of their the concession, but they don't give us all. So so again, if if the angle is the posse gets all this money, posse should pay for it, well, the optimist club, are we gonna say, hey, optimist club, we want a hundred percent of the money you made? So that we can pay for this, I don't, I don't, you'd start losing partnerships out there.
In the city, we we don't charge for the electricity for the lights, I mean, we we don't charge for those things, you know.
I just think that's where the rift is. Is the posse gets all this money from it. But you expect the taxpayers to pay the bill for it.
But do you feel that way about the optimist club?
The optimist is all donations.
Yeah, they 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 sell hamburgers, hot dogs and.
Right.
And and but then they turn around and then they give back through through other donations and then they help, you know, the community and.
Sure. But the optimist pays for the things that they put on, right?
Clarify that one, please.
The optimist funds events that they put on.
So like, the optimists are doing the the fireworks.
Right, and they and the optimist is paying for those?
So, well, sort of, so they 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 went out and and raised money from businesses.
T-shirt sales.
And then what they did, and the city generously. What we did is, we said, you go and raise money for the fireworks, and then you come back to us and whatever you have raised, we will match. Because what we want, so, you know, I I still live in Cass County. But Bates is is where I work and spend most of my time, and I want Bates to show up Cass. Because I, you know, I have pride in in Bates County, and so I want our fireworks display to be bigger than. And so we match what what the optimists do. And so, you know, again, we we contribute, you know, the public funds to there, so that our our display is. Much better than, you know, other places, so so please come out to our our Fourth of July this this weekend and you're gonna see a heck of a fireworks display.
So the city paid for a community event is what you're saying?
Yes.
And that was legal, right?
Absolutely, absolutely, and 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 I and I verified that, because again, it's 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 that public use. Because, a- a- again, a, a- and and one of the reasons why I I hear, I I don't wanna be confrontational. Because, again, I I I think we're, we're all here for the same reason, we're all here for. Absolutely, I mean, it's, otherwise, we would not run and and go campaign. I mean, we've we've all, we've all done those things. You know, one of the reasons I'm here is, what what can we do to make the event go on? Because, again, it's it's become a huge event in the northern part of 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 our county. And so, and it's become a a popular event, you know, the first time I I went to it, I'm like, oh my gosh, it it literally doubled the size of the community. And so, and then I looked at at our arena and I thought, oh my gosh, we need to start investing, you know, in our park. Because, again, Adrian in the past had not done a very good job of that, and so that's the things that we're we're trying to change. And so, you know, I I appreciate the partnership with the sheriff, I, you know, I I'd love to have a partnership, you know, with the county, you know, the different things that we can do. I I appreciated the commission, you know, investing in us, in our water, the things that you guys helped us do. You know, anything that we can do to, you know, to to work together, and so that that's why I came today, it's like, what can we do? You know, to to make this, you know, put put this on.
And and I'm, I'm actually confused more now, because Jamie, you just said. That the rift is that the posse makes money off the rodeo. But you're not, you don't have a rift that the optimist club makes money, you don't have a rift if the four H gets paid to pick up trash.
I don't have a rift, I'm just.
But you take the rift here.
Because that's one of the, one of the comments with the auditors was.
Okay, so my.
The posse is making all the money off of this, but the county's paying the bill. They said it's not a fundraiser because the county is not making any money back off of it.
So is is the problem that it's illegal according to them, or that somebody's making money that we don't like, because we don't like the posse?
The problem with the auditors is that it's, they they say that it's not legal for us to do.
It's not legal, and they have a problem with the posse.
They have a problem with the county funding.
Funding the posse.
Okay, so we quit that, we quit funding the posse.
But they look at this rodeo as funding the posse.
Okay, so their vision, based off the people that they are talking to, who are against everything Chad does. I would not be surprised if the auditor has a skewed vision on their opinion. I I have not gotten anything, any communication from them, other than when I sat in a room with two auditors and two attorneys and my attorney. And I I will quote their attorney that said, this is a waste of my three hours. And so, I I I'm.
We don't have anything in writing with them yet, because your audit has not been released.
None of the audits have been, there were six sheriff's offices in the state of Missouri last.
This is conversations that have been had.
And and I've I've talked to a different state auditor too. And I'll tell you what he said. I brought up the statutes, I said, this statute says this, this statute says this, where are we? And I said, I just keep going back and forth, and his his exact words, you you'll go back and forth until you die. He said, you just have to make a decision. I don't think that, and I I said this last week too. I I do think that a statute is a document written by an attorney for an attorney. And there's always a huge amount of gray in the middle of there. What I do, what I have seen that I do like, I do agree with, I think you talked about six different. Lawsuits that have already been to court. And it are pro with what you're saying. I mean, there's law that has been, and and that's where we're headed if we don't. I mean, there's law that has been, and, and that's where we're headed if we don't, don't make a decision. I mean, the writing, I can see the writing on the wall, unless I missed something. And then going back to the, uh, commissioners and sheriffs that I've talked, some of them, you know, clean out Pettis County, you know, big, big towns. Uh, Cass County, um, some of the sheriffs and commissioners are like, hey, we don't do that, don't worry about it, it's, it all don't pertain to us, but if you need something, call us. Some of them, some of them are, hey, we do a donation only. We do Angel Tree and, uh, shop with the cop. And, and there, you had one sheriff that said, pay it. Do it. Why wouldn't you? So the, the spectrum of that is three different, I mean, there's three different opinions basically there with fifteen or sixteen that I've talked to, but if we go back to what the cases that have been settled already of this nature. I tend to think we're not, we're, we're not gonna win if we don't pay this.
The overview, John, of the public use doctrine was the Supreme Court had to settle these type of disputes. The Supreme Court said, we're gonna have to get involved. And it took a lawsuit and it was appealed to the Supreme Court and the Supreme Court said, okay. It is very vague in the constitution, the statutes aren't clear, so we're gonna have to set court, uh, precedent. And court precedent is huge in, in the legal world. So, a- and we could sit here all night and I could lecture and I could talk, I'm, I, I got elected for a reason because I'm a good talker. Um, but we fail as men and, and women as elected officials, when we have the attitude is, we've never done it that way before, we've always done it this way.
I, I agree with you.
We fail when we say, we're not going to, to do something different because nobody else has done it. Well, if you know me very well, I've been the guy that's like, so it's not illegal to be doing, so let's do it. Now, sometimes you end up being case law and it's the ones I just listed. But the point is, this isn't an elect Chad campaign. This isn't, this is put police officers in the middle of the community, in the middle of, of all those citizens, the thousands of people that come. Let them rock those crowds, let them high five those little kids, hand out the little bracelets, hand out stickers, let them ride our ponies. Everybody wants to ride a pony, everybody grows up, wants to be a, a cowboy until they see him get bucked off. But, but, but my point is, those horses have opened more doors, the rodeo has opened a lot of doors. Um, I just, we just rode through Adrian last night on a horseback and I can't believe how many kids have come, you thought we were the ice cream truck. Kids that come out of the house and wanted to pet the horses. I, the question is, are we benefiting the public? Does the public benefit?
I love your community policing ideas with this.
Do you remember?
Yes.
I, I apologize, sir.
No, I, uh, the footballs, um, even, uh, ink pens. I mean, I've got grandchildren that have got gas at a gas station and a deputy had no idea who they were, but see these two little kids. Um, since I was a small child, things like that have happened. Um, I mean, I can remember in the seventies, after the Watts riots and racial tensions extreme, we've had, uh, national leadership that has been down on law enforcement. I see the county that I love, my home, trying to make a positive image with law enforcement. Um, I see a free rodeo to families that some of them may not be able to afford, you know, four kids, mom and dad. You know, everything's expensive. It's not like Cass, it's definitely not like Cass County. Um, where they charge, yeah, where they charge a gate. And that's exactly right. We are not Cass County. We are Bates County. Um, and, and I know, I think I see this more from the north coming down. And I don't mean anything, I, I know what happens, uh, Rich Hill, you know, all the fireworks and everything they do every year, the fourth, it's known nationwide. But I do see more, I don't know that it'd even be more, but I do see a huge community involvement around rodeos, Fourth of July stuff. And this is no charge to the citizen. Hey, come out, look at our equipment, meet our cops.
Where, where?
It's actually free.
Especially free?
It's not free.
It's free for the citizens to get in. They, they don't charge a thing.
When you worked for me?
It's not free, taxpayers pay for it.
Okay, when you worked for me and we had family fun day at the parking lot?
Yeah.
Was that free?
No, because the taxpayers pay for it.
Okay.
And, and I know where you're going with this, but that was how many years ago? And I've learned a lot since then.
Okay.
And I've learned.
But what I'm saying is, you, you yourself then recognize the importance of community policing.
I did.
You spearheaded that.
I know I did.
And the kids came, didn't they? And these weren't the kids that are gonna go to Worlds of Fun and have carnival rides. They're not the kids that's gonna get.
No, I, and I know that, and I have thought about that. I have thought about that.
And so, so my.
But things have changed since then.
We ha- we, I, and I agree, we have, uh, so another meeting that we were at about PRTM and, and I know it didn't make the minutes, but you had two other office holders that said, or at least one office holder said, when you have an auditor that says it's legal, an auditor says it's illegal, how do you pick which one you listen to? Cause we've gotten conflicted auditor opinions, right?
You listen to your attorney. You get a legal opinion.
Okay. And have you talked to your attorney? And what did your attorney say?
It's personal confidential. I'm not gonna put that in public. Well, I will tell you what he said in his experience. Well, I'll tell you that part. He said in his experience, these type of situations, um, these groups go out and they get donations to pay for these events. That way you don't have the problems that we're having right now with the other things. I'll show that part of the email.
Okay. So apparently he didn't say it was illegal, cause I would think you would say, he, he said it's illegal, right?
He, he said in his experience.
Okay.
These organizations go out and get donations to pay for.
Did he say it was illegal? That's my, that's the, the question at hand. Is this illegal in his opinion?
He did not exactly say it in those words.
I, I've produced my lawyer's, I've shared my lawyer's opinions, um, and, and one that's not my lawyer and, and some research by some legal scholars that disagree. Um, and, and I agree with you. In most cases, organizations do go out and, and, and do it. But this is a community policing. I can't prove, I can't expect a civic group to do it all and plead for it all so that we can live with it. And, and especially in a time, in, in a community where we have the money to pay for it, there's no question, right? There's zero question that there's money available for it. The county, the sheriff's office's budget has it on, correct? So it's not a money issue. It's, 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 I, I'm gonna tell you what I really think it is. It's a control issue. This isn't about the rodeo. This is about control. And I can respect that. And then my question to that comment of my own would be, where does the sheriff put a stop to somebody else controlling the sheriff's office? I was elected duly, um, to make those decisions. The courts have held that many times. And so, today, one day it's PRTM, the next day it's rodeo, the next day it's gonna be what? Where, where do I finally say, and, and listen, I, I think I've bent over backwards multiple times and, and tried to work well and, and tried to keep it peaceful. Um, and, uh, I think it just keeps building until it's, it's here. So where do we go? I mean, uh, if it's a control issue, great, then let's cancel the rodeo and, and, but I'm not gonna put that out. I, if we're gonna cancel the rodeo, uh, as the sheriff's office is gonna cancel it, I think the commission should be responsible for notifying the public that the rodeo is canceled and that it's not gonna pay for it.
I don't wanna control you. I don't wanna control your office. I don't wanna control any office. Um, in the past six months, I've learned that, uh, by having this position, I am in multiple offices. And at this point, I'm kind of, with one office, I'm at the point of, hey, I'm sick and tired of doing your job. Um, not to pick on anybody, I'm not saying that. That's how I feel about some things. I love the fact that this is a community policing effort. I love the idea, especially with the kids. I know what it takes to put on a rodeo, I've done it. Um, years ago, I, I, and I won't even get into that, but I, we have no definite answer from an auditor. We've already spent over thirty-five thousand dollars on an audit that I would tell you, a lot of it was just a witch hunt. Um, just what I know. And how much more are we gonna?
Can I ask what all it does?
It's an audit coming up. With the bill on it over thirty-five thousand?
We don't pay for the state audit.
What's the thirty-five thousand dollar bill?
There was a twenty, there was a, no, we do not pay for the state.
Somebody does, or tax money does, just like he said.
To my understanding, it's over thirty-five thousand.
The other audit, we have to have independent audits done that we have to pay for.
And that's the one that come back in twenty-three.
We have to pay for that one. Yes, that was a, that's, that's independent.
It's a financial audit.
We're gonna apply the same concept that we applied a while ago. It's not free, so I pay for it.
Right, taxpayers.
Required by statute.
Taxpayers still pay.
On the state's audit, it's something that has to be done, but the state makes us do. The other one, the financial audit, is required by statute that we have to pay for every two, every two years. And that, that's what keeps us able to borrow money. I've, I've gone through an, an audit of some sort since I've been in office every two years, so.
I, so that's where I stand. I, we can, we can beat the dead horse for the lack of better terms.
One thing, one thing I want you to understand. Past commission and this commission, anything that your deputies, your corrections officers, your jail needs, we're not gonna get in your way. We're not gonna say, no, you can't have that. No, 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 that's not it. Because your job is, as you said, to provide protection to the people of the county. And you can't do that if you don't have deputies or corrections officers. If they kept somebody, they gotta have somebody make sure they stay there. And since you've got a federal contract, you've gotta have corrections officers to make sure that those detainees are housed, fed, medically taken care of. Those are the things that we know you have to do. And we are not gonna get in your way to keep you from doing any of that. It's just the issue of paying the funding out the way it is. It just, everybody's wanting to know, does the feds even know that you're doing it? I don't have a clue. I don't know how you submit the information to the feds showing.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
So, so I, so I hear, I hear two conflicting points. I hear, to your, to your point, um, whether or not the, the funding, whether or not the federal government understands.
Right.
Which, to your point, is, is a legitimate point.
We don't wanna get in trouble with anybody. We don't wanna lose contract.
It's legal. And so, whi- which is two, two completely different things. Whi- which, to your point, is a legitimate point. To yours, I think it's, i- i- it's sort of like what's going on in the federal government right now. Uh, we had a president send missiles, which there's presidential present, uh, precedent, which the last, you know, five or six presidents have all sent missiles over, you know, util- utilizing the War Powers Act. And so, one side says it's unconstitutional, the other one says, no, it's very constitutional. Everybody's saying, no, 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 you know, and, and they're bickering. Now, obviously, it's legal. You know, there's, there's plenty of precedent to back it up. But you have people that are applying a very narrow scope in their interpretation. And so, they're, they're adhering to it. So we've presented legal precedent to where it's obviously legal. And so, that argument i- is weak at best. Your point, legitimate point, that needs to have some investigation, so be it. Um, okay. Here's the only thing I ask. If you're gonna fund it or not fund it, at least give me the courtesy of letting me know two, at least two months, if you're gonna cancel it, so that I can have the time to figure some other funding source before you cancel it. That way, I can at least put a rodeo on for my citizens. That's the only thing I ask.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
We've never talked about canceling a rodeo. Love to figure this out, Chad.
We have, we have no one that tells us you can't do that. No one. Not auditors, not senator, not governor. No one says, hey, you cannot do that. Everybody gives us statutes that are gray. We all agree they're gray. One's this way, one's this way. We have two commissioners sitting here that have paid this for four years.
Before the auditors came in and says it's not legal.
My auditor says something too. We have no one, nothing in writing, no, we don't even have this audit coming up. We got nothing. All we've got is what, two people, Jamie and I, have talked to two different auditors. That's all we have. Am, am I wrong?
Well, and I've told you three, this is entirely your decision. It does not affect me either way. Because it, but if it is illegal for you guys to do that, it's gonna come back on you guys.
Can I ask when that?
And you're the ones that are gonna be signing that.
Can, can I ask when that meeting occurred that you told them three that it was their decision?
Probably the meeting when I pulled each one of them individually into my office and talked to them about it. So we, I didn't have a quorum present, so I didn't need to have it in minutes.
But I, I'm still back to my point.
So go back to auditors. Um, in, in the beginning of every audit, we all get told by the auditors what, we are not giving you legal advice. We're not anything but an, uh, an opinion and to help you with best practices. Am I correct? Is that?
Pretty much.
Am I, I mean, if I'm wrong, again, please tell me.
Pretty much it.
Okay, so it's a legal opinion. We all have opinions. Mine stinks sometimes. Um, and.
So, no, it's a dog food, ain't it?
I, I, look, I, this, I don't want this to be the, the big dog match. Like I said, I, I, I'm gonna tell you, um, I, I've made this every meeting I've ever been, that I, I do feel like that it's, it's somewhat personal. It's, it's about control in the sheriff's office. I respect John. And you said you don't want to respect John, what you said about supporting amended women in the sheriff's office. Um, and, and I, I just, I guess my last comment to all that would be is, um, community policing is, uh, becoming a bigger and bigger role in what we do every day. From the governor's office, from the president's office, right on down. Um, and, and, you know, again, I go back to April ninth, we were all on same board. We stood with each other, we signed a paper, making a pledge that we would support community police, policing initiatives. But then my question is, do I need to come to the com- the commission and say, do we go to Rich Hill and, and community police down there for the Fourth of July? They've depended on us for seventeen years. Uh, do we go to the Adrian Fireworks Festival this twenty-eighth with our command center? And our giveaways and, and community police with the kids? Um, where, where do I, I guess I'm asking for some guidance. Where do I get to, to make those decisions? And, and, you know, where, where is the commission's decision making? So everything I see in, in the legal world is, uh, you know, it falls on the sheriff's shoulders. And we're all acting in a good faith. I mean, honestly, uh, like John said, nobody says it's illegal. Nobody says it's wrong. And, and if a court would determine that later, uh, then so be it. We'll, we'll change and do it different. Again, I, I was told, not by the auditors, that they didn't like how we did the posse and we bought shirts for them and, and, you know. Okay, I, we, we have stopped that, have we not? So, I, I think I willingly have, have complied with everything that I'm aware of, uh, that they've made recommendations of, except this one. And again, I don't think, I think that the rodeo is just the mechanism. It, it's really about a, a power struggle. That's my opinion, so.
Can I ask a question on a separate issue? You made a comment earlier, you've had troubles with invoices since twenty-three.
Not, not you, Jamie.
Okay. And, and I want to tell you the reason why I send invoices back.
It's not what I'm talking about. When there's mistakes.
Okay. And I can stop that.
No, no, I wanna correct them.
Okay.
And, no, I, I was talking about in twenty-three when we weren't gonna pay for flavored water cups and.
No, I'm saying, I, I try to send those back, she's correcting, but I don't have to.
I, my, from my understanding, there was a second invoice that was in question beyond the rodeos. Has that been cleared itself up or? What, just on the, the?
Twenty-seven, something for the paddles and the malls and things.
Yeah, because we knew what that was gonna be used for. More than likely.
Well, actually, most of that stuff's given away long before the rodeo. Rich Hill gets most of these fans, so.
Well, you have the fans and stuff like that. You think?
And they love them.
Oh, yeah.
You think?
So.
So it's up to the commission whether or not, uh, we're gonna pay it, which I think we should. Um, and then we deal with the auditors. Um, and then we deal with the auditors. Do I wanna deal with them or, or not? If the auditors wanna push it, there's how many state cases that have already said it's approved. They've already went to Supreme Court.
During COVID, we didn't have an audit. I think the last, first one was like nineteen, and then we didn't have that one till twenty-three or four, is that?
One-four.
So my first year or two, we never had an audit to say what the last one published about. It had not been monitored for eight years.
So when they come in with their report, we've already made our decision.
And what would be the repercussions if we pay it? Is the county on the line, you know, by the auditors or how does that work?
They haven't told us no.
Well, that's, you know.
I mean, they, they haven't told us, hey, don't do this.
And, and I don't think the auditors can tell you yes or no. Uh, they're, they're in opinion and they will, they, here's what they do is they, they plant the seed and they leave and say, you guys figure out the answer to that. Um, and, and their guidance. Um, and granted, we're, we're a, a, uh, one of a kind.
The, the more the ones that stuck in the middle. It's kinda like this Senate Bill one ninety. State legislator passed it, gave it to the counties. You figured out how to do it because it's in your court. We don't care.
That, and I would, I would again say, if the auditor showed up, they're gonna write you up, which we, we know, I'm gonna get wrote up on multiple things, um, that we say, here, here's what we use to make the decisions. And if those are wrong, um, and you're gonna write up and say in your opinion they're wrong, we have an opportunity to respond to those. Last I checked, uh, the state auditor still allows an office holder to respond to what they were, uh, being wrote up for. And, and, you know, my intent, if it was me and I'm gonna get wrote up for this, I'm gonna produce this stuff and say, I believe it's legal and that you're wrong. And, and, in a respectful manner, I, I, you know. But again, I'm not, I'm just telling you where I'm from, you, you guys, the, the other, well, I can't think of doing that.
We've approved your budget to pay it. I don't know that we even need to motion or to vote on it. We should pay his bill. If the auditor's got a problem, they can take it up with us later. I mean, I, I'll talk to him about it. I'd be happy to talk to him. I've talked to him several times this year.
If the auditor.
And they, and they knew this was coming. I mean, they knew this was coming. And even one of the comments was, hey, maybe we need to have a pre-audit review before. And he said he'd get back west, man, I've heard nothing. That's been weeks ago.
If, if somebody from Jeff City's gonna run Bates County, then why are we here?
Yeah, we're not.
Why do you, why did we get elected?
We're not doing that.
Well, they're trying to do away with us in one way or another. They may have, or they not have any offices before long. They do what they want.
So I, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel, but I say pay it. We got a bill, we approved the budget in January. I think it's been proven that this is community policing. I think that's exactly what we signed off on. Um, no matter how many times I talk about how I like the public image. I don't think that, I think we've listened to court cases and I've got six or seven here in my mind.
You got all the ones that Chad has?
I think, I, I know I've got some of them. Yeah, I, I know I've got at least some of them. As he was going through them, I was remembering names and digging them up in mine. Um. I don't, I mean, we've, we agree, we agreed to pay his budget. I mean, I, how could, how can we not pay his budget? I don't understand that. For any reason, we agreed to pay this budget. If it's something illegal, yeah, hey, here's the brakes, can't do that. If it's something that we know, well, auditors have said this. We have no proof other than Jamie and I's word. And I totally, I mean, I'm not discrediting that a bit. I don't mean that. But we, we've got nothing that says, hey, you cannot do this. And you guys have done it for four years.
Yeah. Well, again, that was because nothing had ever been said we couldn't. And then all of a sudden it says, no, that's not according to the statutes and state constitution. It is illegal according to that. So we gotta, gotta, kinda gotta stay with where we're at on that. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but I would look at a couple of those cases to see if it in fact entails something like what we're trying to get through here.
Those, those cases aren't gonna be, what, what you understand, Jamie.
No, they're not the same time.
Those cases aren't gonna be about a sheriff and a rodeo.
I know that.
I'm gonna write a book about this lady called Sheriff and a Rodeo.
But I wanna see just how we can make certain that it interprets correctly through the court system. You see what I'm saying? You know me well enough. You know I'm a cop long enough that I've gotta follow what the statutes say. And find out, if the statute didn't write, send the damn thing back to the legislators and make it fixed. Well, that's never gonna happen because they can't even get the bills corrected between the House and the Senate to go back to the Senate to, to the House. So that's why the courts in a lot of times write rulings or precedents because the laws are incorrect. We both know that. Am I not correct, Chad?
No. I, I said it earlier, that the courts get involved and they have to make a, a interpretation and, and which is where those come from. And those, those were directly, uh, connected to public use doctrine. So public, anyway. I appreciate your guys' time. I'm sure we, no groundbreaking movement here today.
We really appreciate what you and your people do, whether you think we do or not. Regardless of what you hear rumors of, and you know, anytime you hear a rumor, come talk to me. You've known me long enough.
Well, we, we owe him an answer. We owe, uh, Ryan from the city of Adrian an answer. Um, the least we can do is give him a date. Hey, we'll have an answer by.
We will work it over this afternoon and we'll let you know Monday afternoon. Does that sound good?
That's good.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.